Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you begin with the roll call, please?
Council members.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfik.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
I'll thank your honor.
Very good, thank you. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. It's nice to have so many folks in council chambers tonight. We'll begin with item four, communications from citizens, and a presentation by Nancy.
Thank you so much.
Nancy's from Alliant Energy, by the way.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Snod. I'm the key account manager for Alliant Energy. And I do work with large customers and communities and chambers in economic development. And I try to visit with the cities, city councils, just once a year, more as necessary, just to kind of let you know where we have been active in the community in the past year. So I'll just share with you briefly. Our operating presence, we have an operating center at 215 Oak Street. We have 16 full-time employees, including supervisors and field personnel. And I'm pleased to say that we've added four full-time people in the last 24 months. So we are growing our workforce to support your growing community. We also try to be a good partner with things like the foundation and corporate sponsorships and donations for some of the worthy causes in the community. The last time I was in City Hall, I had a great opportunity to support your community gardens project with a nice check. And then also, I went over to the senior resources that day as well. Some of the other areas where we're supporting are the YMCA, the symphony, the festival wreaths, the schools, and the Heritage Association. We also do support the economic development in Muscatine. And I'm regularly attending the Greater Muscatine Chamber in Economic Development Group. I'll be there at the meeting tomorrow. And we help them as well with industrial marketing support for their website. And we've also supported scholarships toward certification, toward certified economic development classes that some of their professionals have been pursuing. We have made some significant investments in our natural gas infrastructure in Muscatine. And this would have been through 2013, so last year, just under a quarter million dollars. And then we are a property taxpayer, of course, and in Muscatine, we paid, and this would be fiscal year 2012, 2013, we paid $141,000 in taxes. And then in Muscatine County, $235,000. I'm very pleased to see that we've also had some very active rebate participants. And with the gas side, this would be people that are submitting for rebates when they do things like buy a new water heater or a new qualifying furnace or insulation in their home. And we have paid out 713 rebates last year, which I thought was excellent participation in a community this size. And the rebates supported the people who made those investments. The rebates back were $153,000. We also do support dealers and contractors that are sending their people to trade shows or running advertising or promoting energy efficiency. So we support the dealers as well, and we help them with $12,000 in various channels of support. Last year, I did some work with the city in some energy audits, and we did do some of the city facilities. I believe we did the fire department and the library and City Hall. And we identified some areas that you might want to focus on for your own efficiency investments going forward. Another program we do is the tree planting. We've got branching out with trees forever. And last year, I think you got a pretty nice grant for the Emerald Ash Borer remediation. And we also do Operation Releaf with the Iowa DNR in Muscatine County. And just with two years of participation, we've invested, along with the DNR, $65,000 that has resulted in planting 1,305 trees. So I remember last year when I was here, the mayor says, "You only get five minutes." So I wanted to keep it nice and tight tonight. And I think your next presentation's going to be pretty interesting. And I'm glad I went first because that would be a tough act to follow. So, thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
You've gone from 16 employees to you've added four?
We have 16 currently. So it was 12, and we have added four employees.
So you've jumped 33%.
You know what, I like it when you look at it percentage-wise, that's right.
Well, we're happy to have the employment. But what's the reason for it? Are there any safety issues being addressed?
Well, a lot of it, like a lot of other companies, we have a lot of workforce that is the baby boomer. And so we're trying to build a nice, strong bench, anticipating retirements in the next couple of years. And the type of work that our crews do, you need somebody who's had a good opportunity to train behind a veteran for at least two or three years. So we're hoping to make sure that we're in good position to support for the future as some of our workforce moves on. And we did add a young engineer behind Ann Chris because she just absolutely needed some help. She's only 24 hours in a day. So we did add an engineer.
Are they addressing any new safety issues that we should know about?
Not off the top of my head. We're pretty proactive with safety. Was there something that you were concerned about?
No, I'm just looking for an answer to that question.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else, council?
Your honor, I just want to make a comment. We do work with Ann regularly through Public Works Engineering. And she is just outstanding to work with, very cooperative, and always there to help us out. So, just a pitch for Ann and our.
That is excellent feedback. I will share that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in council chambers that has an issue or an item they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda? Very good, we'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through C, items 8A through D, filing of communications, which is 12A through D? And tonight's bill's totally $1,840,136.86.
So moved, your honor.
Tom?
Second.
And second, Jeanette, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, folks, we're going to drop down to item eight now, petitions and communications. There is a request to approve a concept plan for use of city property. That would be the transfer station field for a dog park. And this might be a good time to bring Peggy forward. And Erin.
Oh, no, I thought you were putting something more for me to read or something.
Is there a mask? Ah, there we go.
Thanks, Karen. Okay. So I'm Erin Dindinger.
And.
Peggy Gordon.
So first, I wanted to say thank you for allowing us to present tonight to the city council. And then also, thank you to the citizens who have given us so much support through our process. So I'm going to go through the dog park project, part of it, and then Peg will do the second half of it. So what we're looking at here is, is we want to develop an off-leash dog park in the city of Muscatine with the support of Muscatine Park System. And where we'd like to put that is, there is a parcel of land between the transfer station and the industrial park off of Hauser. And there's actually 14 usable acres. And we are looking to ask for eight to 10 of those acres to use. And then the rest could go to other development opportunities in Muscatine. And this is a great resource area for us because it ties in with the soccer field. It ties in with Kentstein, and then also, the new trail that's going to be going through there and around there, which is Musser and Wiggins Road Trail Extension. So why do we want this? Well, besides we have very compassionate people on our team and have for several years, it was identified in the Community Action Improvement Team in 2012 based on multiple feedback sessions with residents in Muscatine. And then also, it went on the comprehensive plan in 2013. We feel also strongly that it is to support the Blue Zone Initiative, both residents of Muscatine who participate in the dog park and then also with their animals there. It will be good for physical and mental for them. We would allow both the residents of Muscatine, anybody that is also a visitor, so anybody who comes from the county or outside of Muscatine that would be interested in using the park, so it wouldn't just be for the residents. And if you notice on the map right there in the corner, southeast Iowa, we don't have a paw print there, so we'd like to fill that gap. In the United States, there's 2,900 dog parks. Iowa has several of those dog parks, and we're just missing one right there. So we would like to fill that gap for Muscatine. So who are we? And we didn't just pop up yesterday. We have been a team since early 2012. We have had a team of citizens put together, probably between 12 and 15 at any given time, that have worked not only to raise funds for this dog park, but also to do awareness for dog parks and actual our project. So some of the things we've done, we did multiple farmers' markets, not only this year but last year. We did the scarecrow contest. We were invited to the art museum to do the ice cream social, where we brought dogs and books and read to the children, so that was a lot of fun. We've done the last two years, Fourth of July Parade. And then in the last two years, both in October and September, we did Bartoberfest. In Bartoberfest, we raised about $5,500 to $6,000 in those last two years that we put into the community foundation. We established a 501(c)(3) fund, and that's where money's been going. So we've been active in the community and done quite a few things beyond this, but that was just a few that we went through. So, not only do the citizens of Muscatine want this, our dogs want it too. And to kind of tell you, like, how many dogs are in Muscatine? Some people don't realize this when we bring these numbers out, they're very shocked. But the American Veterinary and Medical Association said, there's 36.5% of households have a dog. And the average is 1.6 dogs. So obviously, we know that there's people that have more than one dog in there. And in Muscatine, we have 9,008 households. So that really factors into about 5,200 dogs that are in Muscatine right now. Okay? This is just Muscatine. We're not talking about the county where we're going to bring, we think we'll pull people from there for sure, too. We're going to target 300 permits. What the permit will be is, is we're going to ask for a fee for the dog park, so it'd be around $25. We have not established that yet, but that will be per household. So every year, annually, they'll be able to file for this permit. They will also have to have their rabies shots. And then if they're part of Muscatine, they'll have to have their license fee, too. And the goal for us to do that is to be able to cover maintenance, because we don't want to pass this on to the taxpayers. And then any future amenities that we'd like to add to the dog park. So we want to make sure that it's self-sustained in that way. Okay?
All right, I get the fun part here. Thanks, Erin. So you all have a copy of the design in the back of the packet, but we also have one here. So our design, and this is a conceptual design, created for us by the Iowa State Landscape Students last year, and Professor Matt Gordy, who's actually a past Muscatine resident, his folks live here. So they did a great job. They created a park that's a little unique. And when we first saw the design at the beginning of the year, it was two circles. We called it the snowman design. And we're like, why the circles? The other one was a more traditional dog leg design that they presented to us. But the circles gave us a savings with fencing. A circular design gives us about 15% savings when it comes to fencing. So with that, we could build out more area. So we took that, we ran with it, and we built, because we were encouraged to make the design bigger and better and suitable for Muscatine. We wanted it to sort of meet our standards and not just put up a fence around the field. So what you see before us is our design. It is made up of four sections. But before we go to that, this, again, go back to where Erin said it was going to be placed. This is between the transfer station, which would be on the bottom of the drawing. Up at the top, under the word design, you'll see a little triangle coming out. That's Phelps, so that's the industrial park. On the right-hand side is Hauser. On the left is the bypass. If you drive down Hauser at all, and I know Bob, you do quite frequently in your ward there, you'll see a driveway that goes back to the field that we're talking about. It's right past the old railroad. So there is a driveway that goes part of the way. That field is what we're looking at, what we've been studying. So get back to the close proximity to the soccer fields, Kentstein. And the new trail system is actually shown on the design, because it was imperative that we connect it to the new trail system. And that was very important. So you'll see it in red, it says new trail extension. So that's the Musser-Wiggins Road Trail. And we've been meeting with Randy and trying to make sure that we connect up properly, use the same, like, materials. So looking at the design, we have four areas. We're looking at a total of seven acres fenced. Three acres for the large dog area, two acres, or 1.5 acres, I'm sorry, for the small dog. Those two areas are very common with dog parks. And a small dog might be height, it might be weight, we haven't defined that. But I've been to some areas where it's, you know, they have a little mark, your dog has to fit under there, sort of like Hubble, about his size. An area that's somewhat unique to us, that we really want to make sure we put in, there is a senior or timid dog area. And that'd be about a half acre. Not just for senior dogs, but folks that need to transition a dog or rescue in to a more timid area, sort of a quiet zone. So that's unique. Clinton has one. Iowa City does not, Cedar Rapids does not, Bettendorf does not. They have Spot, which is a small dog area. And then we have a two-acre training field, and that's the Crescent on the left-hand side. What the design is not showing is that we would fence, and we've included in the budget, is a fence between the Crescent and the large dog side. So we could close that off if we needed to sort of let some, you know, an area sort of grow back. If there's a lot of use in the large dog area, we can transition the people over to the training. Or we can shut it off for events. And we've been talking to Officer Yates. There might be some opportunities to do some, you know, a training event or other events. I've been to ones where rescues would come in and visit. So we want to build this out. It would have a nice entry pavilion that would meet the city standards with shelters, things like that. Since we are building from scratch, we're talking a farm field that needs to be created of turf, there's no shade. You'll see in the design, it shows about four shade shelters. In our budget, we have about seven. Those are opportunities for donation and things like that, sort of how we'll go after those funding. You see a lot of trees, a lot of opportunity, and we'll be calling Alliant after hearing their great presentation to see what we can do. But we've also been approaching other groups that are looking for some projects to help them, you know, it might be a leadership Muscatine project. Might be a great Eagle Scout to do a grove of trees. So we're looking at ways to help fill in this beautiful landscape. So this is the area that we have. You'll see the budget here in a second, but we've had to build in some things that sort of has increased. I put, any questions on the design? Okay? Awesome.
Peggy, do you have approval from the neighbors, or aren't there any neighbors close by?
Good question. During the comprehensive plan, there's some guidelines in there as to how far from residents and playgrounds. So at the beginning of the year, we sat down with Rich Kleins, and he gave us an inventory of all the different areas. And they were sort of close to neighborhoods, you know, or playgrounds. Like Oak Park would have been a great example, on the small side, but would have been a great example. But it was a little too close. This, you don't have any resident within the guidelines set down by the city. So we did sort of go through that inventory when we were shopping for land to use. This just came up, it was a great, great chance.
I do have another question, but I think I'm out of order.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
It's, when you're talking about license for $25, which is fine for the residents, but if you have somebody from, say, Davenport that just comes down for the day, do you charge them $25?
Some parks do. If you go to Clinton, there's a little envelope with a little sticker, you put in your donation. It is, you know, it's an honor system.
Okay.
And dog people are like that. They want to take care of their pets, they've already made a commitment to bring them out. Are we going to make a lot of money off of that? No. But when somebody's coming down for a soccer tournament, or for a ball tournament, or if somebody's coming down for an agility event at the K-9 Center or at the Egg Center, they're going to look for the dog park. They're already calling the vets, asking for, where can I take my pets? One for emergency help, one for vet services, and one for pride. But they will do that. Again, it's not going to be a huge moneymaker, but we'll have that out there. Iowa City, I think, has a day use, too. It's usually in the $3 to $5 range, you know? The $25, by the way, some parks have $25 for the first dog, $15 for the second, and $15 for the third. We're looking at a $25 per household fee. Because there are some parks in eastern Iowa that don't charge at all. Bettendorf does not. But we really think it's important that people have skin in the game, pay a little, make sure they get their dog license, which will help increase. We've been working very closely with Greg and Rich and the team. So we think the $25 per household is a little more user-friendly. And like Erin said, that's going to help offset the maintenance costs, and then we'll be able to put some aside for capital improvements or repairs, fencing repairs, something like that. So, but a good question. So now the budget. So I didn't hear anybody gasp, that's a good thing. The budget, really, there's three key elements that we have to have. We have to have security, we need good fencing, it is commercial grade. We've been talking to the vendor that the city recommends. We're also looking at, like, a weed barrier. So Rich and his team, Nick, have given us some guidelines, what they want to see to help with maintenance, so we don't sit there and have to mow for days. The fencing is the biggest part. The next largest part, as you can see, is the driveway. So we need access. There is a drive already into the land, but we need a parking area, we also need to extend that. The original design had the park situated on the plot even further, and we moved it forward so we could reduce the amount of driveway. Because the original estimate was probably closer to $150,000, $180,000, or $170,000. And when we moved it, we reduced it. We think that cost will go down even more as we leverage some opportunities with the city on projects that they have using purchasing power. The other one is water fountains. We think it's important that we have water for our pets and people down there. We're not talking restrooms, we're not putting anything like that, but we do need some water. There is already water on that land, there's a hydro, we just need to hook it up. But we've built in the cost of water fountains within some of the parks and also in the public area. Remember, this might be, you know, joining up to the trailhead, so people are going to need some water. So those are the three biggest costs. And then we start getting into land prep and project fees. We've got money set aside there, $20,000. We're already sort of raising money, like Erin said, to help with seed and some prep. Bartoberfest is not going to pay for this, okay? That's to help us sustain it. But we are looking at some of those funds we use maybe to buy the seed, to put on the sulfur, because we've already done soil samples, and we know we need sulfur. We're looking at entrance shelters, communication boards, shade shelters, landscaping and signage, other amenities like benching, lighting, storage, agility equipment, splash pads. We're not hooking up to the pond down there, okay? Because we're not ready, I mean, we can't use the pond on the transfer station land. But if we want to build it an amenity to let our pets play in the water, we could put a splash pad. It's not like the beautiful we have on the river, but we could put something there, some sort of amenity to let them play in the water for short periods of time. So our budget, this is a high-level budget, it's $364,000. Okay? Not too bad when you're talking about seven acres. The one area, the primary area, is three acres. You're standing in the middle of weed park in a big, open area, that's three acres. It's quite sizable. Now, one of the questions that'll probably come up is funding, before we get off this slide. So our funding, again, we're not asking for city tax money to fund the build of the park. We're going to help raise money through fees to help pay for the maintenance. We will be going after individuals, businesses, and corporations, and grants to help pay for this. We have a very active team, as you can see, sitting here in the audience, that will be helping us with that effort. We have some members that aren't here tonight. But we're prepared to start going to the donors, to the individuals. This is not something that just corporations should pay for, individuals are interested. They want to come and play, so. So that's our budget.
Why did you leave out a restroom?
Probably because of the cost. And if you go to most dog parks, there isn't a restroom. Sometimes they might have a porta potty, excuse the language, but they might have that type of facility. But we have Kentstein close by, okay? And, you know, as the soccer fields grow, maybe there's opportunities there. But we really didn't want to build that in now. If our residents, if our members come back and say we really need that, then we'll have to look at that for a future phase. And we do think that if necessary, we could phase this project in. We don't want to go that way, but it might be something we look at. It's a really good question. But I don't know about, I'd have to bring somebody, say, Erin, could you hold my dogs while I go inside here? Because I'm not taking them inside with me. So the win, okay? Erin, Alita, we've been working on this pretty hard for quite a while. We do want to see this project kind of fruition, okay? We want this to happen. People have been investing their time and energy in it. So during the winter here, after we have the land approval, and that's sort of the big check that we need next, is we will start working on the finalization of the plan, okay? That's when we're going to start the funding efforts, more at the individual level, at the business level, at the grant. We need to get ready for land prep in March. We need to continue working with the city departments to finish the guidelines. We've already had workshops and gathered guidelines and all that kind of stuff, but now we need to formalize it a little more this spring. We need a growing season, take it from soybean field to turf, not soccer turf, but we need good turf. We would love, love, to see a launch this fall, in November 2015, pending funding. So we've got to get aggressive with that. But that's our win, that's sort of our dream right there, because we'd love to come out next fall and say, Bartoberfest is now at the dog park, and we're going to have a heck of a party. So, any questions? We've had some great ones, but any others?
A couple. What about sprinkling the grass? You can have a dust bowl if you don't.
That's a good point. We are not building in sprinklers at this time. One, we're having, we've got Nick looking for drought-resistant grass, okay? There is a little water table, that's, there is some water down there around the fringes and stuff, so we'll just have to see. Now, if that comes to something that we need to do in the future... do in the future, we might have to bring in temporary irrigation during sort of the hot season to do that. But we would take the lead off of Rich, Kleins, and Nick Gao as to what they say. I mean, they're our champions. They're our mentors when it comes to this. We've got to listen to them, so. But the first thing we said is, "We need drought-resistant, because we can't be watering." And if you go to a lot of dog parks, they do get, they play, they have playgrounds. They get worn down a little, so.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah. We'll have water nearby. We've already talked about approaching the irrigation company during the first growing season to see if they could come and help as a test site to do similar irrigation if necessary.
What do you, what do you think the annual maintenance is going to cost?
The numbers we had after our first meetings with Rich were probably, with mowing, 26 weeks, not even mowing that much, they estimated seven acres, about four hours with a bigger mower, about $4,000.
And cleanup?
The...
Or is just going to let the mowers distribute it?
No. The dog owners are responsible for cleanup. And we will have some voluntary work, especially maybe at the beginning of the season, the end of the season and such. And, you know, you become familiar with your other dog owners, and you're going to say, "Okay, would you like a bag?" You know, we have to be responsible. That's part of it.
So, I'm sorry, how much did Rich estimate?
About $4,000. And that was our loose original estimate, so that was to mow seven acres when we were talking about that.
One of the things they asked us to do is put a weed barrier in to make it easier and to be able to, when we, under the fencing. And then also, when we put our amenities in there, whether it's shelters or benches, that we make sure that we can get the larger mower in there. And then the gates that we're putting in, they have to be able to get those mowers in and out. So there's things that they're mentoring us on, so that we just don't put up something and it doesn't work well for them. So we want to keep the cost down on maintenance for them, too.
So you're hoping for $7,500 in annual fees? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. We also generate, in our donations this year, I don't have an exact number, but between Barktoberfest and then we also did a doghouse fundraiser, we've pulled in over $3,000. And we weren't real aggressive on our, on our fundraising. We've actually been more aggressive on our awareness to the citizens. And also, we'd like to do some education to our citizens, too. When we talk about, are they going to clean up after their pet? Most people have been to a dog park or know, or familiar with it, but those that aren't, we need to educate them so they understand they're still responsible for their dog inside that park.
Where are you going to sell, or how are you going to sell the annual tags?
Well, that's an interesting question. One of the things that Peggy and I and the team have found in our research is, is Muscatine does not sell very many dog licenses. And one of the reasons, we feel, as residents, it's very challenging to get here to do that over our lunch hours with parking and getting in and out. And a lot of us don't have a long lunch hour with this. So we've, we are working with them to see if there's a possibility, if we can go to our vets and they can sell, they can do the rabies, because they're supposed to. They're going to get that license, and we're going to ask for an increase. We'll pay a small fee to the veterinarian for that, and then if they want to buy the actual license for the dog park. So we want to try to package that in. But to understand that there's still going to be opportunities, our committee is going to continue to stay on this project. We're going to have, maintain a committee, and then we're also going to help support that. If they want us to help support selling those licenses and dog tags, we can do that for them. We can do days. We can do events for them. So we want to make this a successful project, so we can't dump it back in there. We want to actually generate more money for the city. We have opportunities to do that, if we go to the vets or other avenues. And so that's one of the things we're looking for, for them.
Yeah, give the vets enough money to make it worthwhile, and we'll have eight times as many licenses sold.
Right. For, for people who have dogs, they know they're taking them in and they're getting their vaccinations. That's the easy part. Getting here over my lunch hour is not so easy. That's just the facts.
Yeah, don't think about it.
And it's $5, and for $5, it's tough. I mean, you're driving down here on your lunch hour. It's very tough. So we want to raise that cost up, make some more money for the city, and then also get everybody those licenses.
That's one of the first things we talked with Greg about, was some opportunities, some ideas, so.
That's a good idea.
All right. So what we're asking from you, if that's all the questions?
What kind of, how many, what commitments do you have thus far for your capital campaign?
We don't. We've been sort of going back and forth, because we were, we thought it would be better to go out and get fundraising and raising beforehand, and then other coaching said, "You need the authorization for the land." So we've been reluctant. We've had the donor package sort of started and ready to go. But again, we're not looking at just the corporate donors, but the individuals we talked to Iowa granted about, the fundraising opportunities for, like the shelter. We have ideas on fundraising for that middle business that's ignored a lot. So we're ready to go, but we need the land, so we can check that off and say, "The city's committed. We know you believe in it. It's in the comprehensive plan, but now we need this part." So that's what we're, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One of the things that, in our awareness of campaigns, we've had people approach us and want to give us money, but we've said, "Wait, because we want to make sure that we have the land." I know that sounds crazy, but I don't want to take somebody's money and then go, "Sorry, we didn't get the land, and we're not moving forward." So we, we have those names, and we're not giving them out to anybody, so don't ask. But we do have people that are interested in donating money, donating for shelters.
Get a pledge, get a pledge.
Pardon me?
Get a pledge.
Yes.
Sign it.
And then we'll start doing that.
Yep, we wanted to get the land. We wanted to move forward and do the right thing.
Well, you can get pledges now.
Yeah.
That's our next phase. So what we're asking from the city council tonight is to take action, because we need that check mark. We would like you to authorize, authorizing the city property to be used for Muscatine Dog Park, pending funding. So as city council, we understand that you have to authorize that that is city-owned property, but we need to say, "Yes, we will start using it for the dog park project, pending funding." So we're asking for a vote tonight to authorize that.
Contingent on funding.
Contingent on funding.
Mr. Mayor, I'd so like to make that motion that the city of Muscatine will have a dog park at the location that we're talking about in Ward Four, near the sanitation fill area. And let's, let's get this ball, ball rolling.
Contingent on funding.
Contingent on funding, pending funding, excuse me.
Would that be contingent on being fully funded in either cash or pledges?
I would say we can do a phased-in approach. So once we have, and we have to work with Greg, if we're at the 50% to two-thirds level, we can go forward. The design is such that we don't want to, we want to go for the whole $360,000. If we need to, we can come in about $248,000 and get three of the areas, the driveway, the parking, and the water. We would just have to cut back on maybe the training area and some of the other amenities, like lighting and stuff like that. So we, we could scale it and then phase it in, but it will become harder for us to, like, fundraise for, or ask money, again, for like the fourth area fencing. We'll be able to build shelters. We'll be able to get trees and landscaping, because those are great things that people will donate. But the big-ticket items will have a hard time, I believe, in the future, because there's so many great projects in Muscatine. So we're going to go for the whole thing, but if we have to, if we can get to that 250 in commitments, we're going to dig, and we're going to start building.
What would you not build if you got to 250?
Looking at the design, Mr. Raywall, there is a crescent, the training area over here. We would take that off. We would also, we do not have a lighting plan, but we have some monies budgeted for lighting. Again, you're in a season like the winter here, by 5:00, you're not going to go down to a dark field. We'd like to have some lighting for security, so we might pull that out for future. So there are some things that we've got identified that we could pull back and then fundraise separate. But what would happen is, we would lose, I really do believe that we would lose this section if we don't get it off.
Educate me, there's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Randy.
There are some other items that we're working with them on, parking, alternate or combined parking for, with other projects, that it could also help reduce the cost on this. So I know that Greg has been working with Aaron and Peggy on this, and we see other opportunities here to perhaps help them have what they want and, and cut the cost back some on this project.
And that's why we call it a conceptual design. The elements are all there. They may move around based on working with the city and stuff, that we might adjust their placement to save some money. But we're going after four sections. We're going after shelters. We're going after the trail connection. But yes, Randy's, Mr. Hill's perfectly right. We've been working with them, because we want to drive costs down.
There's a building next to the Nancy Kent Shelter. Is that a training, I don't know what that's used for.
The big metal building is the Muscatine Canine Center. You mean that big?
No.
And it's part of the Humane Society, and they sell, we actually take classes down there.
So that's used for training?
Yes, agility and everything like that. It's a great amenity. But we are separate from the Humane Society. We're respectful of them, but we are not connected.
Is the training field redundant, then?
Absolutely not. That is actually something that the residents can sign up for and do. It's not offered all the time. So the training center obviously would be offered all the time. Plus, we hope for an opportunity to invite residents and maybe outside sources to come in and use that. So right now, currently, that section at Humane Society, you either have to be part of that, so you have to be joined in on an annual basis, or you have to take a class. And so it's pretty limited, and you have to actually have an instructor there, too, if you're taking a class. So not everybody can do that. This training center is, is very unique. Not a lot of dog parks have it, and we think it'll be a good add to this dog park for Muscatine.
And there are some of vets and stuff. There's new things like lure coursing and just things that will draw dog people in, that you need a bigger field. That's two acres, whereas the canine center is a, it's a large building, but it's like a yard. This is two acres, so.
Your Honor, I'll second Bob's motion.
Bob, did you want to put a minimum funding amount on it, or?
Yeah, we need to.
I'm, I'm, I'm not putting any minimum. I'm just saying, pending funding, and see where that goes. We're only authorizing the concept plan for the use of city property, and city property is that transfer station field for, for a dog park. You've seen the concept. I'm suggesting that that concept, pending funding, goes.
Counsel, I'd... I wouldn't recommend putting a dollar on this. I mean, Bob has a right. I mean, they're just requesting, can they use this property if they come up with the money? And we're not going to do anything down there until they come back and say, "Hey, we have the money, and this is what we want to do." And right now, they need to land on a place.
It's understood, then, that the city administrator has the capacity to say when to go.
Right. They'll be back.
As long as that's understood.
No money, no go.
Okay, counsel.
We know our next steps.
You have heard the presentation. You have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
So it's the, the way this is working out, we're putting up the acreage. You're going to fundraise to develop the property as your presentation indicates. And then you are also going to assist in raising the funds to offset annual maintenance.
Yeah, we'll help work with the city to set the guidelines, provide the events, to sell the permits, that type of thing. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, in principle, in favor of this, I'm kind of surprised that you only expect 300 people to use it.
I'd like to speak to that. I think that's a very low number. I'm actually just moved out into the county, and I'm excited to be in here and part of that. We did not include any county residents. We did not pull any of the fruitland or anybody around us in. But we wanted to go with a low number. We expect it to be higher. We didn't want to throw out a huge number and you not, not be realistic here, so. But we have over 100 people following us on Facebook. We've done two events in two years at Barktoberfest, and we've drawn in over 100 people each time. So we have a huge amount of people following us and supporting this, so I would be surprised, too, if, if we have just 300 people.
And I was, I was thinking that the, and Nancy could probably answer the question, but I was thinking, over the years, we've had an agreement with the veterinaries about permits, whether it's the tags, because that would have been the only reason why the city would have been involved with the vets. But there was something, some, something we've done. I, I thought they were already collecting.
No, they're not.
No.
No, they're not.
And I'm not a dog owner.
We've actually talked to some of the vets about this. Really, it's, we're going to have to make sure that we give them enough funding to offset what it's going to cost them on the administrative side, and then we're going to have to set up a, a system through the city that works. But they are the ones that do the rabies, so it's the best source to do.
Well, yeah, one-stop shop.
Right. It's just a nice thing.
You've got to, you've got to take the animal there, and you've got to pick them up.
Right.
So why not just pay? And even if it's a pass-through, I, administrative charge can't, obviously, it's got to be something.
We recognize that as an early opportunity right away to, to generate money for the city. It just needs to move forward, and this might be a good tie-in for us to help them.
How, and, and Mr. Raywall brought, brought it up, how, how much picking up is, is actually done by the owner of the dog versus city staff or whoever is in charge of the dog park?
Our expectations.
In other parks?
Our expectations, and it's been made pretty clear, that the city does not want to pick it up.
Well, I think it's been made perfectly clear. You're, you're supposed to pick up after your dog when you're taking them for a walk, but I still find deposits made in my yard. So obviously not 100% are taking care of it.
I would encourage you to think about some piping, if nothing else, so that you could, like golf courses, you know, big sprayers that hit half the area, you know, do it now.
We can, we can invest.
Folks, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a concept plan. It's all they're asking for. Just a concept plan.
Let me, let me summarize this here for the sake of everybody here. It's, we make it more complicated than what it is. We have seven acres that the city owns. We earmark, as a city council here, to make that a dog park for pending funding. And I don't care if you're going to build it in one phase or six stages or six phases. You deal with the city staff to get it done. All what you're asking for is that, seven acres to earmark for a dog park. Got it right?
That's it.
Very simple? Not complicated?
Right.
Yep. Let's roll.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the questions, Osama.
Okay, moving down to item 11 from the city administrator, 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving changes to the Section 8 administrative plan. Staff has reviewed federal regulations and HUD recommendations and is now recommending changes to allow the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency to better serve its jurisdiction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your...
Bob?
Second.
And a second. Jeanette, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Bob. Aye. Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving changes to the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency's public housing admissions and continued occupancy policy. Staff has reviewed federal regulations and HUD recommendations and is now recommending changes to allow the MMHA to better serve its jurisdiction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second. Was that Phil?
Yes.
Okay. And any discussion? This also is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Now, Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the fire department to submit a grant application through the Department of Homeland Security, DHS, assistance to firefighters grant, AFG, for a new 3,000-gallon water tender, which is a tanker. This grant provides funding for the essentials that firefighters and first responders need to be safe and effective on the job. The cost of the water tender is $272,000. If the grant is awarded and accepted by the city, the local match would be $27,200. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Jeanette?
Second.
And a second, Tom, any discussion?
A quick question, I don't recall this being, the 27-2 being budgeted, so where does the funds come from? I'm in favor of the general concept, this is a heck of a deal.
Generally, in the past, on this type of thing, we can look to take it out of general fund, we also could include it in a bond issue, but I would think with this amount and getting 90-10 money, that we could look and, and, you know, we had, our fund balance at the end of last year was higher than what, what we had expected, and this would probably be a good use of that fund balance.
Anyone else, Counsel? This is a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration as a request to renew a 28E agreement between the City of Muscatine and Muscatine County for animal control services. The city's animal control officer will respond to assist Muscatine County through direct authorization of the watch commander or commanding officer. The county will pay for mileage to and from the site, as well as the hourly rate for the animal control officer during the duration of the call. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
I think I heard Phil and a Tom for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve a $5,000 contribution to the Community Foundation for the Muscatine, yeah, Community Foundation for the Muscatine Levy Feasibility Study. The Muscatine Levy Stakeholder Group has received a quote from, from Klinger and Associates to implement a feasibility study exploring options for added levy protection. This study will cost $50,000, and the city is being asked to contribute $5,000. Assisting in the, the funding of the study does not commit the city to any future decisions. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve change order number four for the Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. This change order covers the additional work required because of a redesign of the storm sewer near, near Park Avenue. The work was necessary for completion of the project, the total amount of the change order is $5,628.08. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Mike?
Phil.
Phil, any discussion?
Well, I was going to ask a question during council comments, but since we are talking about Colorado here, can you give us an update on Colorado Street as well as Cedar Street? Randy, please?
I was planning on doing it at the end of the, the meeting.
Can wait, then.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
And again, no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve an amended supplemental agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the maintenance of primary roads. A supplemental agreement was approved by the city council on September 4th, 2014, with a payment amount of $7,602. Due to the, to the newly authorized rate of $2,287 per lane mile, the amount has been increased to $16,557.88. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor. I heard that over there from Phil, and a second, Bob, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration as a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a mid-mound wing plow. Two bids were received with the low bid from Henderson Manufacturing Incorporated in the amount of $8,708. It is staff's recommendation that city council take action to approve the low bid. There is $11,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mike? And a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama, any discussion?
Quick question for Andy, is, is this the same manufacturer as the first one we have, or, you know?
You know, I think it might be, I don't know for sure, Scott, I'd have to check on that, but we do buy an awful lot of our snow equipment from Henderson, so I.
For interchangeability is what I was getting at.
There's that, you know, the, what we bought last year was the, the belly plow, that was a new feature, this year, the wing plow's a new feature for us, see how it works. Suspect that we'll be getting more of these in the future.
Okay.
Any other comments, Counsel?
You, yes, please. Given last winter, do you have everything you're gonna get and need, Randy?
I think so, we had a snow and ice control meeting, summit, on Tuesday, where we invited the police department, MusCom, school district, all the relevant public work staff, which is most of them, just talk about where we are, pick up where we left off last year real quick. You know, for a snow emergency declared, we'll give you a pass, we'll let everybody know. After that, we definitely will start ticketing and towing, need to work with the police department a little bit better on how we would go about doing that towing, as we get scattered out quite a bit. We have issues that, we call them plow jockeys, but the people that plow private businesses in parking lots and push the snow out in the street, and that becomes a real problem for us, so. So, there, there are issues that we'll work on through the winter, but by and large, we have 3,000 tons of salt laid in, and last year, we had 26 storms, and this year, we're hoping for four.
Well, that's why I asked you, you've got everything you need.
I had a hope, so.
Average enough.
I can write that down, can't I?
We already have one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve a lease agreement for a new copier for the Finance Department. Xerox is currently, currently offering an incentive program for copiers ordered for delivery before December 31st, 2014. The Work Center, ooh, the Work Center 5945 OCT would provide the same capabilities as the current machine, but would be slightly faster, have improved copy resolution, and various other enhancements. With the purchase of this copier, the city would realize a savings of $654.84 annually. There is no cost or penalty for transitioning from the current lease to a new lease. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration as a request to allow deer hunting within the city limits. A request has been received from Frank Berman to allow hunting on 143.5 acres of his property, located at 1885 Savannah Avenue, that was voluntarily annexed into the city in 2013. With this voluntary annexation, when this voluntary annexation took place, a provision to allow the owners to continue to hunt their land so long as it remains undeveloped and unsubdivided was written into the annexation agreement. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Phil and Mike. Any discussion?
Will this continue until, do they need to get permission absolutely every year? Or is this continuing until it's, it's developed?
It will continue until the city council acts on amended city code to make sure that it is correctly stated in the current ordinance.
Okay, good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you wanna? You can come to the podium, I assume, the request of the mayor.
I just wanna classify, it says request for deer hunting? That's 140-some acres, there are also coyotes out there, squirrels, rabbits, whatever, so is it strictly that, or is it just hunting?
That is a good question.
What did the provision say in the agreement?
It's, he's got a.
It should just be hunting, I mean, that's what it should, it, yeah, I, I agree.
I'm gonna tell you, Counsel, this is, this is based on the memorandum of understanding that the city council passed in September of 2012 with the adjacent property owner, the Petersons, and in that particular provision, it states that the city agrees that, in this case, Mr. Peterson, his children, grandchildren, and other members of their immediate households to hunt on all land annexed into the city, provided the owner and all individuals comply with all state hunting and other laws and regulations that shall apply, and provided the amount of ground available for hunting is at least 50 contiguous, contiguous acres in size. And that is what the precedent is for this.
That, that should be the same thing, then.
So, it's hunting.
Are you good with that?
So, it should be hunting.
Yep. Thank you.
Sir, sir, could I get your name, please?
I, Berman.
Address?
My address is 304 Merzal Lane.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Counsel, on that issue? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries seven to zero, and it is now time for communication from council members, beginning with Councilman Raywall.
Nothing this evening.
Phil?
I just wanna know if the Finance Department's gonna get a new vacuum cleaner to clean up toner. Oh, I guess we don't need that answer. Nothing else, Your Honor?
Scott?
I have nothing, thank you.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing, but I'd like to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thank you so much. Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Randy?
Yes, Your Honor, follow up what Osama had asked and what I wanted to share with you and the public on several projects. The winter is near, and we're looking to button up projects for the winter. Just, first of all, our asphalt overlay program concluded today, finished Demora Street, and so that is done. Colorado Street is basically buttoned up for the winter, totally opened up for traffic right now, and will continue to be that way throughout the winter. Contract will be back in the spring to most likely take care of landscaping requirements as much as anything. But Colorado, it's, people are using it now, it's pretty much opened up. Forest Parkway and Long Meadow Lane, as well as Cedar, there's still work to be done, it's concrete to be poured. The Forest Parkway, um, backup. We, the contractors, All American Concrete and Higher Construction, will be working tomorrow and this weekend and through Monday, while the weather will allow them, the rain actually is beneficial, because it will help thaw out the ground a little bit, and it's when that happens on Sunday, that is a positive and not a negative. But the contractors are planning to continue pouring concrete. We'd love to get Forest Parkway, Long Meadow Lane poured and open, and Cedar Street, the same. We have told the public that Thanksgiving was our deadline, we're pushing the contractor to do that. They have proposed several options, and we have told them no. That we have told the public that it would be open by Thanksgiving, because they told us that they would have it open by Thanksgiving. In fairness to the contractors, they can't predict the weather either, and so there's that part. And, and both contractors have been working, so it's not like they left and gone other places. Therefore, Cedar Street will be open for Thanksgiving, probably won't be till maybe late Wednesday afternoon, but it's still before Thanksgiving. And the, the other things that go with that, though, now, we have the roundabout, we have to have the appropriate signage up or in place to help people, we have to have the appropriate, or we have to have lighting over that intersection, so people know and can see when they're negotiating it, we will have that in. The lighting will be temporary, the light placement will be where it's going to go, but the type of light will be a temporary one until we get others in there. And the, the other thing that I would tell you is that the contractor this spring will come back in, and more than likely, will have to close Cedar Street again for a couple of weeks, so that they can continue to do some work on the roundabout area, there's not that much room to open it up to traffic for them to do the work. But the closure will be minimal, so they can finish that up. There's no reason to keep that road closed all winter long just for that purpose, and so therefore, we will get it opened up. We'll remind people, this is a construction zone yet, and so, you know, be aware of what you're doing when you go through there. I know they poured the Grace Lutheran Church apron, driveway apron yesterday, it was out there today, and they were prepping Logan and the entrance into the Cedar Apartments to get ready for the pouring, which I think's gonna happen tomorrow. And they were also doing some work down at Stonebrook in the entrance, the turn lane into Stonebrook, so that, they'll continue, I think, to also, they have inlets that they need to work on, another couple of driveway entrances, I think that they're gonna be working on, but it is their intent and our expectation that Cedar Street will be open per our comments to the public, and a compliment to the contractors for getting out there, I mean, they're, you've been talking about working Sunday if the weather allows, and they can get the concrete plant to open up, so, so that's where we are with it, Mayor. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Fran?
Nothing, Your Honor, but happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
And I have no comments, any other business counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn? You need to adjourn.
Osama, don't you like dogs?